Alright, good evening. I'd like to call the Order League at the Public School Board of Education regular monthly meeting for Monday, July 13th, 2020. Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Here.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Present.
Plack.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Here.
Madam President, we have a form.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence before we begin our meeting. Thank you.
If I could mention to the board members from the last meeting that we had here, please pull your microphone a little bit closer than what you had. You've had trouble picking it up on the sound system for recording and for the public.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Six: Recommendation/Consideration and Vote on Reorganization of the Board Including: A) Election of President; B) Election of First Vice President; C) Election of Second Vice President; D) Election of Board Clerk; and E) Election of Deputy Board Clerk.
Madam President, I move that we elect Janie Pearson as President of the Board; Gina Davis as Vice President; Jennifer Bennett Johnson as Second Vice President; Travis Salie as Board Clerk; and Ron Plack as Deputy Board Clerk.
Madam President, I'll say. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Okay, you can reorganize now. Take your papers in your name and Jennifer, all you're going to need to do is turn your light over that's in front of you. And Travis, you can go where Gina is. And Gina can go where you want. We should pay.
for commitments for this next year and give me first and second choices. I appreciate it. Thank you. Agenda Item Seven: Comments to the Board by Citizens Registered to Speak to the Board.
We have one registered to speak. Betsy Jones, and Ms. Jones, you will approach the podium. There's the microphone right there in front of the stage. And you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Jones, we thank you very much for coming tonight, and we want you to understand that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, and we will not be able to respond, but we appreciate you coming and speaking to us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hi, thank you guys for letting me speak. Hi, Chris. He's my daughter's softball coach, so it's fun to see him right there. Did an excellent job with a broken arm, little girl. You guys have just an astronomical task in front of you guys tonight, and I, my heart goes out to you guys. It's tough. It's a tough time. Sorry, so emotional as a parent to see what's going on in the world right now. So Francis and I are discussing the task that you guys are going to be doing about reopening the schools. There's a lot of questions and comments. There was a proposed proposal put on the Guthrie News page, and there's a lot of unanswered questions which you guys don't have, we don't have, and it's going to be take it as it comes. But there are some questions as a parent, in order for my children to come back to school, that I need to be comfortable with, knowing that these questions have been answered. And some of them were and some of them were not on that proposal. And like I said, you guys don't have all the answers. I don't have all the answers. But we did come up with some questions. I did put a Facebook post out there that if anybody had questions that I was going to be doing this, and I'd be more than happy to pass them on here. I know you can't address me directly, but here is a list of them, and if you guys, I did see you guys were having a break, if you guys could look through them and just look at them and see. And I'm sure it's all stuff you guys have talked about, because you guys are parents, you're grandparents, and you care just as deeply as we do. So I have every confidence in you guys. Confidence in the world and the way it's changing right now, I don't know. And I go to bed thinking I've got the answer of what mode I'm going to do with my kids next year, and I wake up and it's different. And that's, I think, just how this whole school year is going to be. So I would appreciate you guys looking through them. Some of the big things is obviously social distancing. How are we going to keep these kids away from each other? They love their best friends. They're going to be next to them, they're going to want to be there. How are we going to do that and learn? The parents are also concerned about having the teachers be the nurses and have to check these kids, and depend on the parent. Not every parent does that before they go to school, and they're not going to. I will. I know Tammy, Chris's wife, will. I'm confident in the people that I know, but I know there's people that send their kids with medicine in them so that they don't. How am I going to feel like my daughter's safe or my son is safe in an environment like that, when the teachers don't have the tools like a thermometer to actually do that testing? Cleaning concerns. We have one custodian that comes in. How are they going to clean the whole facility? It's a two-story building with a nanic. How are they going to get that disinfectant to the state that it needs to be so that the children do not pass it? Do we have budget for an additional custodian? Somebody that just wipes the handrails and the water fountains and the bathrooms, the high-touch areas down every day? That's an important part of the puzzle that wasn't addressed. Where's this funding that for the chemicals going to be? So, that's my time, but just know there's a lot of parents out there that care and have confidence. So, I'll put this here if you guys have a chance to look at it.
I'll be sure to make it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Comments to the Board by board members? Dr. Simpson, Superintendent's Report.
Just a few things going on. First of all, I want to recognize and introduce our new principal, Guthrie Junior High School. He's with us tonight. Class of, Guthrie High School Class of 1988, Mr. Todd Bramble. Stand up. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm sure it'll be just as thrilling as you ever hoped it would be. Okay, little update on some things. Graduation will be Friday night in Jelson Stadium. It will begin at 8:00 p.m. All seniors have been notified by letter of the procedures to claim their four tickets. Distribution will be Tuesday through Thursday at the high school from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Families will be asked to social distance, and masks are strongly encouraged. Guthrie News page will livestream the ceremonies for those who cannot attend. We have heard from 151 of our 218 students in the senior class. 144 have indicated they plan to participate in the ceremonies. Five are not sure, and two declined. So, I think that speaks highly of our senior class and their commitment, and that commitment is mutual by the school as well. We're going to get them through this one way or another. I want to offer my thanks for many of our administrative staff in the IT department as well as our curriculum department. They have essentially created an online enrollment process from scratch. We've been testing this process where parents will enroll their child and submit all forms online. Further, we have created a process where we can offer in-person assistance for families lacking internet connectivity or need special assistance in the process. There will be certain bugs that must be worked out, but their effort is greatly appreciated. And as a footnote to that, I got in there and I enrolled one of my children, and then I had my wife enroll our own so that we could test it out. And we had several staff members that were doing that to try and give a quote-unquote beta test of the process and trying to work out the bugs. So, great job, guys, on that. With the prospect of potential closure at some time during the school year, Superintendent Hoffmeister announced on Thursday, a grant process requiring internet hotspots that we use to sell signals to provide internet service. We will be making application to provide such a device for families that lack internet connectivity. I've been in contact also with Central Electric Cooperative to explore possibilities where they can provide such a service, and that's in their long-range plan, but that is not something that they are prepared to do right now. That's, the area that they serve is an area of underserved high-speed internet, obviously, and they are, their long-term goal is to try and accomplish that, but they're not ready for this school year. Also, as connecting those two points, one that I made previous and one I just made, part of the enrollment process is a technology survey of families to determine their connectivity, their provider, so that we know what their speeds should be, and the number of devices that they have at home, so that we can determine and get a handle on how many kids will need additional support if we do have to go to distance learning. We have a contract under consideration later in agenda, a secondary solution to provide distance learning for all students in grades six through 12 of edutainment. We utilize this vendor for many years, and the State Department of Education secured statewide agreement with ExactPath that we will utilize for services for distance learning in grades K through 5. Since that's being put, given to us by the State Department of Education, we don't have a contract with ExactPath, but we will have access to it. And as another getting-pick option, both of my children have been on that in a test portal to try and see what, how functional it is, and I've walked them through lessons, and they're already ready for me to leave the house because of the additional schooling they're getting. The last point I wanted to make is we are making good progress on our summer bond projects, and we expect the security entrances and renovations to Fodery to be ready for the start screen.
Agenda Item Nine, the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? If not, a motion's in order. Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Davis, Second Vice Salie, to accept the consent agenda. Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion approved. The business agenda, Item 10A: Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon a Tencent Increase For All Paid Student Breakfast and Lunch Meals. Pages 162 and 163, here to pack.
This is required by USDA, and if you have any questions on this chat, let's present to address them.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation for the Tencent increase for all paid student breakfast and lunch meals. Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the increase for all paid students for breakfast, lunch, and meal. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. B: Recommendation/Consideration and Action To Approve Ms. Carmen Walters As Authorized Official For The Guthrie Public Schools To Sign Any Federal Claims For Reimbursement From The State Department Of Education. Page 164.
This is an annual item that we bring to the board for approval. Regular approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve Ms. Carmen Walters as the authorized official of Guthrie Public Schools to sign any federal claims for reimbursement from the State Department of Education.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10B. Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. C: Recommendation/Consideration and Action To Approve Ms. Angie Young As The Authorized Official For The Guthrie Public Schools To Sign Any Special Education Reimbursement Claims From The State Department Of Education For Project 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642. Page 165.
This is an annual item as well that we bring to the board for authorization. Regular approval. And also, it's worthy of note that the agenda item says Angie Smithley, but it is Angie Young based on recent notions.
Congratulations. A motion is in order.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Ms. Angie Young as the authorized official for TPS to sign any special education reimbursement claims from the State Department of Education for Project 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve 10C. Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon Activity Fund Handbook For 2020, 2021. Pages 166 and through 201.
This is presented for your annual approval. There are very minimal changes in the handbook. It's on the red line master in the board packet. If you have questions in this chat, let's hear your answer.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the Activity Fund Handbook For 2020, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 10D. Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. E: Recommendation and Consideration and Action Upon The Junior High School Student Handbook For 2020, 2021. Pages 202 through 239.
This is an item that we bring to you for annual ratification. There are minimal changes there in the red line master in the board packet. Regular approval.
Madam President.
Questions? Questions, Mr. Bramble or Ms. Bramble? I'm going to put Ms. Bramble on the spot.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the Gina High Student Handbook For 2020, 2021. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Not roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. 10F: Recommendation and Consideration and Action Upon The Favor Alternative School Student Handbook For 2020, 2021. Pages 240 through 274.
This is also an item that we bring to you for annual application. Again, very minimal changes in the red line master. Regular approval.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the Favor Alternative School Student Handbook For 2020, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Travis. The motion's been made and seconded to accept 10F. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. G: Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon The Guthrie High School Student Handbook For 2020, 2021. Pages 275 through 310.
Another item that we bring to you for annual application. Again, minimal changes in this, and noted in the red line master.
Madam President, I move that we approve the Guthrie High School Student Handbook For 2020, 2021.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve 10G. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. H: Recommendation and Consideration and Action Upon The Guthrie High School Course Description Handbook For 2020, 2021. Pages 311 through 360.
Madam President, I would move to adopt or approve Guthrie High School Course Description Handbook For 2020 to 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt 10H. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. 10I: Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon The Memorandum Of Understanding Between Indian Technology Center and The Guthrie Public Schools For Supplemental Funding For The Guthrie Middle School Gateway To Technology Programs For 8th Grade Students For 2020, 2021. Pages 361 through 362.
This has been very appropriate for us, and we're very thankful that Indian Technology Center is a partner with us on this, and to tune in $50,000. Regular approval.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept Agenda Item 10I. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
Motion carries. 10K: Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon The Agreement With Imperial Vending For Snack Vending For 2020, 2021. Pages 364 and 365.
This is a renewal of our vendor service agreement with Imperial for vending. She's regular approval.
Madam President, I would move to approve the agreement with Imperial Vending For Snack Vending For 2020 to 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 10K. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven nine zero eight.
10L: Recommendation/Consideration and Action Upon Agreement With Renaissance Learning Incorporated. Pages 366 through 371.
This is a new program for us, the recommendation of Ms. Walters and our staff, and the complete explanation is on page 366. Ms. Walters, if you have questions, regular approval.
I have a question. I know we had teachers spend a lot of time reviewing this, and this was at a time they spent a lot of time, and we appreciate their time, but it was prior to the pandemic. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have a program already in place that we started out with MAP spending $8,000 to train our teachers and reports, so it's not like we don't have a system we can use. And I think with going into the economy, which we're not seeing cuts this year because of the rainy day fund being used completely depleted, or depleted, thank you, I just feel like, is this something we can't hold off? This, because it's a $7,500, and I know it's just a $7,500, but last month, we had, out of our control, insurances that increased. We had a total of about $85,000 last month that we approved that we had no way of controlling costs. This is something, I know it's just $7,500, but is this something that you foresee that we could put on the back burner, that possibly we could see how the cuts, how the cutbacks from the state next year, that we could possibly just put on hold?
My concern to that would be that this is what the staff recommended, and the principals, and touching base with them before the epidemic, and then after, is still the direction that they have, not only that we have to have a state-approved, you know, basically agreement, but also that it matches with RSA, and so that was what they brought for their, you know, desired needs.
And then was their desire to, then after the pandemic, after we shut the schools down, they still want to go ahead and spend $7,500 extra dollars?
That has not changed in any communication that has been given to me.
I'm sorry.
It has not changed in any communication that anyone has provided to me.
So, that has not changed since the pandemic?
Correct.
What do the reports, how do they look different from MAPs compared to, because I haven't, have not been a big fan of the MAPs compared to the parents, so is there improvement there as well with Renaissance?
They are more user-friendly, and they have less information, and for parents that are just starting out with young children in the elementary, the MAP information that is provided is very detailed, but it's almost at a higher level, that you would have to have some type of educational knowledge beforehand.
It seems like MAPs, you have to have some sort of statistical training to interpret some of that information. And then, so, one of the other benefits, I seem to be correctly about wrong, but it seems like Renaissance has fewer questions in the assessment for the child.
Yes.
So that is a perceived benefit as well.
It is. Basically, you're not losing quality, you're not losing quantity, but it kind of, the MAPs tests take a little bit longer for kids, and sometimes starting out, they get a little overwhelmed with it, and we're still getting a good diagnostic of where these students are, but cutting down about probably five to 10 minutes depending on the age level.
Because, see, is it fair to say that children in the lower levels maybe are struggling with reading, delayed there perhaps, or we can assess them more efficiently, quicker with the Renaissance rather than the MAPs?
I believe so, and also their attention span. If there's too many questions, they tend to lose interest.
Ms. Walters, how will they assess if we are on an online curriculum?
Basically, what that will do is the Renaissance STAR testing, it will match with ExactPath, and then the two of them together, we're still getting information from the State Department on what that's going to look like, but it will take that to the next step to be able to correlate those to do at home, meaning some more in-depth lessons and practice tutorials on skills and standards that we're currently teaching, that can keep us current and not just an overview of the whole year.
What about the students that are on the MAP?
That would be the students that are at guess, and the same type of That would be the students that are at GUESS and the same type of situation. And again, we're still kind of getting with Exact Path on exactly what that will look like since that is new.
So MAP will also connect with Exact Path?
Yes, they're both paired with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A motion is in order.
Some might say that as a parent and a board member, I've been on the board long enough to remember Carmen and Dr. Simpson brought MAPs to Guthrie for assessments. And we've invested a lot of money, and over time, we've been able to negotiate for the price of them. I'm open to, and I certainly share Gina's concern on the budget picture for next year, but also see a lot of value, maybe transitioning to something that is more accurate or a better tool for the teachers. Because I've heard some of the feedback, as a parent looking at some of those MAPs reports, I don't think they're that great. So while I'm concerned about the budget picture, I do think this may be a good tool, especially considering how much instructional time we lost last year. So anyway, I just wanted to say that I don't want to diminish your concern because I share that. I think that we've got to be looking at, looking at what we're spending and prioritize some of those things. But personally, I feel like if the teachers in our elementary teachers feel like this is a good tool, I will support it.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Renaissance Learning. Second.
Motion is made and seconded for 10L. Is there discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis abstaining. Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's and one exception.
Motion carries. 10M, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Renewal Agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association, Pages 372 to 373.
This is for grades five through six, and Carmen is here to answer any questions that we have about that. We have reduced a lot of the testing that we've done, and we still have state mandates for certain tests. One other thing that I would mention with regard to both of these programs, and I think we always need to keep in mind, the educational experts that I've spoken to talking about the time lost in instruction last spring. They were jet-vital, it will require two years to recover that. And so having the best diagnostics that we have to try to recapture that and focus our resources on those students is imperative. Recommend approval of item N.
A motion is in order.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the renewal agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association.
Motion is made and seconded to approve 10M. Is there discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven I zero E's.
Motion carries. 10N, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Edgenuity Virtual Classroom 2020-2021, Pages 374.
This agreement with Edgenuity will be our secondary distance learning platform. And I've asked Mr. Ogle to address any questions that the board might have. We are familiar with the program, we've used it in Fayette, we've used it for credit recovery. It's been on the mission for about eight years, but it's never, we've never relied on it as much as we possibly will this year. And so that's why I wanted to offer Mr. Ogle's expertise on that to the board.
Well, we started back in May with the principals and directors, knowing that we were going to have to have a platform in place for our students. And so during committee meetings with you guys through May and in June, and then finished up this year, we did look at several different platforms and got input from the principals and directors of what they thought would be best for our students. And so the one that we came up with was Edgenuity, which we've been using in the district for eight years. Ms. Benson is our expert that's been using that for credit recovery at the high school and then our alt head the last few years, and then just recently our Blue Jay Academy, which is our full online. We were in a consortium with Meridian Technology, and we paid $33,000 for 55 seats. Now, the 55 seats were just 55 seats at one time, but when we were in that consortium, we may have 110 students on that, but we were borrowing seats from somebody else that may not be on it at that time. So the consortium may have had 1,000 seats, and so when it got to 1,000, it wouldn't let anybody else log on. And so when we went back and started looking at the programs and finding out what the price was going to be, we were able to get the price down so every student, sixth through 12th, would have a seat in Edgenuity if we had to go to distance learning, and we could offer more seats in our Blue Jay Academy than we did last year. We capped that last year at 55 students, and this year, we've taken that cap off. We don't know what that's going to look like for the regular classroom, because we may have a fluctuate of 200 students in Blue Jay Academy, we don't know, from sixth through 12th. And so that may lower some of our class sizes, but we had to move a teacher over to Blue Jay Academy. But for $7,000 more, we were able to get every student, sixth through 12th, a seat with Edgenuity license. And so we will no longer be bringing you the consortium with Meridian. We're going to go out on our own, and if you guys will approve this, we will have a seat for everybody, sixth through 12th. One of the things that was asked, and I think some of the teachers behind are, how do we get that out? What are we going to look like if we talk about Exact Path? You know, what are we going to do with Exact Path? What are teachers that are elective teachers? What does that look like? And so we have talked and looked at several different platforms with Google Classroom, Canvas, and Dashboard, and we decided that we would go ahead and use Google Classroom. And so we are setting up professional development with Google Classroom. So every teacher in the district, whether it is a core class or an elective, will have a Google Classroom setting, and they will be trained on that. One thing that we looked at was, how are we going to get training? And we have three professional development days on August 17th, 18th, and 19th. That's a lot for Exact Path, to get Edgenuity, get everybody trained, and Google Classroom. And so Justin Stevens is running some part of our Google Classroom at the high school. He's one of our experts. I went to Dee, he said, "Go to Justin." Justin knows Google Classroom inside and out, and so he is building our professional development online. And so it will be ready to be rolled out August 3rd of what that would look like so teachers could go on to be able to interact with our students. What we will do is, if they will go on and do that professional development off-contract time, we will give them off the September 21st Professional Development Day. We need that professional development upfront, because there's a likelihood that when school gets started, we may have to be out before we get to that September 21st Professional Development Day. And so we'll ask the staff to go in this first two weeks in August, do the professional development, and then Justin Stevens will be able to answer any questions that they will have. We will still have professional development on Google Classroom throughout the year, but we need to get them acclimated to that right up front. And so that kind of gets me to, what will that look like? So our teachers will use the Google Classroom to interact. The students will have a username and password. We're going to require if the students come to the brick and mortar, one day a week, we're going to go ahead and do the online in the classroom. And so we'll get them acclimated to Edgenuity, sixth through 12th, and then K through 5 with Exact Path. And so if we do have to, on a Friday, numbers are bad, we have to, you know, suspend school for a week, the students will be acclimated to get to use that program. Teachers will know what's expected. So if approved tonight for this, what Carmen and I will do next is, I will do secondary, she'll do elementary. We will have principals, teachers, the GACT, and a couple of parents. And we're going to come up to be a unified secondary plan of what that will look like if we have to go to the distance learning. What we don't want is two Algebra I parents have, or two Algebra I students that have two different teachers, and that'd be graded different. We want that to be unified, and so we want input from the parents and the GACT. And that was kind of what, when we had negotiations, we said we would bring back to them. And so all we do in that secondary, Carmen will be doing that elementary. And that is our plan going forward. I know that it looks like that it's complex a little bit, and it may not be complex for a lot of people, but it's going to be better than the paper pencil, and we've had a lot of time to put some effort into making sure that we're going to provide our students an education.
I wanted to mention and highlight something there, that we are working to find ways to integrate parental involvement along with staff involvement in this as we, as we look at what the future, the new normal is. And this, and Mr. Ogle and Ms. Walters have done an outstanding job of trying to plan that and with the idea that we might have to pivot on a dime on some of this. And so that's something that we're, we're working very hard to try and get to a point where we can have those discussions, but we have to find, we have to secure the platforms before we can continue having those discussions.
Doug, I just wanted to clarify, because in the agenda it just says it puts a seat for all students. I just want to make sure it is unlimited.
It is unlimited. Every student that's enrolled at the public school, sixth through 12th, has a seat.
Okay, thank you.
So we can disregard the comment about the audit, the enrollment, we have to pay.
I didn't mean.
In the agreement here, they have the ability to audit the count throughout the year. So we just disregard that.
They'll probably do that to see how many students are on and what time we ask them to audit that. I brought to the curriculum committee, I believe it was in May, what time students got on there. We had students that were on there from 12:00 to 3:00 in the morning. And so they do audit that to give us a time, students are on, how many students are at what time does. And so they will audit that and give it back.
Doug, appreciate your time on this, and I know it's a huge task for you, and it's going to be a huge task for the teachers, so we appreciate them taking this on. You talk about getting the teachers trained up and going with this. Now, when the students get there and have to learn how to use this Google Classroom program, have you an idea how long it's going to take? I mean, it's probably going to vary, but is that something you feel pretty confident the students can? You know, because obviously, we're two weeks in, and we've got to go home. We want the students to know how to operate the program or run the program, so any ideas there?
Of course, the longer we're in school before we have to shut down, it's going to be better, because they'll be used to using it one day a week. Some teachers may decide to use it two days a week, but we're going to at least require it one. I think some of our teachers at the secondary level have been using it quite a bit and know a little bit about it. Some of the teachers at GUESS, Ms. Davidson, had sent them to workshop. I don't know if they actually got to go, or it was online this summer to be Google Classroom certified. And so we've spent some district money to be able to get some people staffed that know what to do with that Google Classroom. So the more acclimated the teachers are, it's going to be easier for those students to learn that as well, because they're going to feel more comfortable using it. So I can't give you a definite answer what that would look like, but I hope that we don't have to go into it the first couple of weeks, because I think it will take a little bit of time for the students and teachers to get used to using it.
Chris, I would say also that it's probably a fair statement that the students and the staff at the secondary level are more comfortable with it and more well-versed. Our learning curve would be at the elementary level. It would be greater there.
Yeah, because, because, yeah. Haven't we been using this at the high school anyway?
Along a lot of the teachers.
Yeah.
A motion is in order. There's no more questions.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the Edgenuity Virtual Classroom 2020-2021 for all students.
Motion is made and seconded to accept 10N. Is there discussion?
Was that Jennifer? Jennifer, did you second?
I second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven I zero E's.
Motion carries. Special thank you to all of our administration and staff that have put so much effort into these preparations. We really do appreciate it. 10O, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Agreement with Wallet School Solutions, Inc. for Library Inventory Software for 2020-21, Pages 375 and 376.
This is Angie, we will approve.
Madam President, I make a question that we accept the agreement with Wallet School Solutions, Inc. for Library Inventory Software for 2020-2021.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion?
I have a question. Dee, if we are online, if everybody's online, does this allow kids to check out any books on a digital-type basis?
It would allow them to do an ebook.
Ebooks? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven I zero E's.
Motion carries. 10P, Agreement with Betsy Chin, PCBA of BC Behavioral LCC, to provide specialized services relating to the provisions of educational and behavioral services for students for 2020-2021, Pages 377 to 379.
This is a new agreement, I believe, Angie, is that correct?
Second year.
Okay, we're in the second year of this agreement with Ms. Chin. Recommend approval.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve agreement with Betsy Chin to provide specialized services relating to the provision of educational and behavioral services for students for 2020-2021. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion?
I have a question. Cost comparison to last year?
What did you get outside?
Cost comparison to last year?
It is last.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Seven I zero E's.
Motion carries. 10Q, Recommendation, Consideration, and Vote to Implement the COVID-19 Guidelines as submitted and to operate as superintendent to make such modifications as may be necessary from time to time, provided that any material modification shall be reviewed by the Board of Education at its next meeting. Pages 380 through 386.
Okay, obviously, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on in the world right now, especially in the concept of trying to reopen the school. One of the things that I placed at your, at your table is the most recent, which, this is as of July 8th. It's a map that shows the risk levels, and they, the state has come up with a color coding system now for, by county. And we are at a, what is considered a low risk in Logan County right now. On the backside of that sheet is the progression of Logan County from March 3rd through June or July 8th. And so you can see that we have risen, we've just dropped off just a little bit, and that's on the backside of it. Then I also printed out, these are new from the State Parks Health Protocols for the different levels of risk. And interestingly enough, there is a high risk that is red, but they don't have that, those protocols out yet. And I wanted, I wanted the board members to have that and know that we are monitoring these things on a daily basis. Now, talking about what it looks like when we reopen, there are more questions than there are answers. But one of the things that, in talking with our staff, we've got to determine is we've got to have a starting point. And we've got to have a starting point that is adaptable. I think if anything, the last three weeks have shown us that things can change in a hurry, and we have to be nimble enough to make, be able to make those changes for the safety and well-being of everyone. And also, many conditions cannot be predicted, and we have to acknowledge that. There are, there's no way to have a roadmap to solve every problem that this is creating. And so having something, a document that is adaptable is critical. I think there's a good likelihood that we're going to have time that we have to either close a school, classroom, or the entire district at some point throughout the school year. And trying to have some work or framework to, to guide us through that is key. And then the next thing that is addressed in here is the item of masks. And there, that seems to be an item that is very divisive and, and very challenging. And then when you factor in the challenges of getting students to wear a mask, it's, it's gone. And then when you factor in the challenges of getting students to wear a mask, it's, it's daunting when you think about how that looks. But I will say that if the State Board of Education or the State of Oklahoma requires a mask, we, regardless of what is written in here, we are obligated to follow those, those directives. And I've been in communication with Superintendent Hoffmeister about that. I also told her that the, you know, there are some things, each community's different. And we had a, we had a mask ordinance inside the City Limits of Guthrie that brought a challenge in a federal lawsuit. And so I think it's, there, to say that those things are divisive in our community is an understatement. I think that our staff has done a good job with a start of the framework, and this is a starting point. That's why it says draft on it. In fact, the copy that you have at your table, I found one typo in it and made a change today, and that was in page, on page... Page 382 of your packet. There's a strikeout that is not in it. Board members, you've, you've had this as a working document since last Thursday. You've seen multiple changes to it since then. We have vetted with our administrative staff and with our attorney and also with the Logan County Health Department. It still will require some changes as we go through here, but that being said, I'd welcome any questions that the board has.
So this screening form, the parent signs that the child is going to listen to classroom through?
They keep, our attorney has indicated that the parents will keep that and retain that. And if we, it's just a, it's basically a reminder that if we want it, we can ask for it. The parent does not have to provide it. But if the parent says that, and this came late this afternoon, if the parent says, "I will not do this," that is a health issue, and we can, in our attorney's opinion, report that parent to DHS.
And we are going to make it very clear to the parents. Correct. Will the same protocol, will this apply to Golden Age and Will Crete?
If you might pull your microphone closer.
Will the same protocol apply to Golden Age and Will Crete?
It's a great question. One of the conditions that Companion Health has requested is that students that are enrolled there be immunized. And, and we can, because we offer pre-K in other, with other offerings, we can make that requirement. But the other plan right now is that both intergenerational and pre-Ks will start at either Central for Golden Age or at Cawdor for Will Crete until such time that as Companion is comfortable opening their doors with that. We asked in the consent agenda, that contract is in there for approval, so that whenever Companion feels comfortable, we will go ahead and make that move without bringing that back to them.
Will there be considerations, given if they do feel comfortable about interaction with the elderly population? I mean, well, because previously the children had, you know, are they addressing those concerns?
If the, if there's concern from the parents about the children interacting?
Or is it the health side, my family issues?
That would be a give and take. I would imagine that any woman that has enrolled in the intergenerational pre-K would not have those concerns when the time comes, but if they do, will make the necessary arrangements. And likewise, that would be something that we'll have to work with Companion Health on as well to, to make that happen. I, I'm not sure where that program will be this year, but I certainly don't want it to go away because it's been too good a program, weak. But for, as a temporary measure, that, who knows when it, when that program will open back up, as a temporary measure, it's going to be suspended and start this year in all likelihoods.
Can you also talk to us a little bit about Busing? Just so it's out in the public?
Yeah, the, right now, what we're looking at is encouraging parents, if they have the means, to bring their child to school. And there is a letter that I would send out that encourages that so that they, we reduce our numbers on the bus. We will have the buses, the windows open, and Mr. Thompson's working on some, some other things that are protection for the bus driver. And we will also have assigned seats in all buses so that in the event that we have a positive case, the Logan County Health Department can do their contact tracing with much more accuracy.
In the event that maybe we don't have decline in bus drivers, you know, that maybe we're hoping for, are we set up to handle that? Do we have enough buses, or do we have, a bus has to do two grand service? We have to, once enrollment gets through, I guess we'll have a better idea of that?
We'll have a better idea of that after enrollment, but that, that was something that we, that we discussed last year for different reasons. And if we perceive that to be a problem, we will try and address it as it comes. I don't think that all school districts in the state are acting with this because, you know, at one point, the idea was that we would sit a, one student per seat every other row. And I saw one school district that's a little bit larger than us and said, "Well, that means I'm going to have to get 211 more buses and find drivers for all of them." And there are some realities that are, are not possible with, with the way things are set up. And so getting parents to accept that and, and possibly take their children to school is something that we're, we're hoping for so that the ones that cannot do that have fewer students on the buses.
Dr. Simpson, has consideration been given to bus drivers and resource officers and people like that that can test your scans when they enter the building tray or the bus?
The, the way this is designed, when you send your child to the bus stop, the, the parent has certified that they are ready to go to school, not, not with a bus driver. Something to keep in mind is we have, our bus drivers are, many of them are more at risk than many of our teachers. And so that puts them further at risk if they're then getting closer to the student and taking a temperature.
While we're talking about distancing, I guess, I mean, I don't know if it directly relates to this plan, but, you know, we have distancing in cafeteria, you know, everybody going back, and hallways, all kinds of issues. So there's many of those issues we're at the address or, you know, best we can address. I know we can't make it all perfect, but...
Here's, here's what I would say about, the goal tonight is to get the board's approval, and then it goes to the administration to try and sort out some of those details on a daily basis because every school is different with those things. And in some schools, it's possible to have a seating chart in the cafeteria, and in some, it may not be practical, and then we have to look at an alternative. And so that's where the administrators will, will start work on what their building looks like, and, and each building will probably look a little bit different.
Does that sound familiar to these boards?
That would probably be something that we're hammering out right until the start of school.
So this motion is basically just giving you the authority to make modifications to this draft so that it can be modified for a next board meeting?
Well, and it's, and in six, if there are modifications, and if there are modifications, I can make those modifications on the fly even during the school year, and then at the next board meeting, the board will ratify that. And it may be necessary that we make those modifications, turning on a dime and having a special board meeting in order to do that is not practical in many cases.
Do we think, Mike, that by our next board meeting, we'll be able to have some answers to some of these questions like what it's going to look like for lunches and things like that? Because, I mean, it's just so difficult. And I know that that's, that's a concern for parents, and it's just if we can be proactive in any way we can to give as much information as we can prior to school start to alleviate the, the parents' concerns.
And I, that's our goal. That's our goal. You guys know, I'm a parent too. I've got two of them in the, in school, and, and I'm as concerned as any other parent because of the, not just my own children, but for all of them. And we're still, we're still trying to figure out what we're really dealing with. I had hoped in April that by now, things would be much different than they are, but, but it's not. And so those are, again, some of the realities that we're dealing with.
I agree it's difficult. I agree with Tina that it would be helpful because just like Betsy, there's, there's hundreds of other people just like her and like myself and my wife thinking the same thing. And, you know, a lot of times, the fear of them knowing is worse than, you know, not knowing at all. So I, I would agree with what Tina said there.
And let me clarify something. The comment about DHS was if the parents refuse and tell us they're going to refuse to take a temperature. So there, the parents have to be in with us on this, and we have to be in this together. It has to be partnership. And sending your child to school when they are not feeling well is not something that we can have.
So have we identified or communicated with the parents that they have a child with, that maybe is at a high risk due to underlying medical conditions or things? Do we have options available for online instruction of UJ Academy? Or we, or we, do we know maybe who that student population is, or are we talking to the parents about options?
We haven't talked to them yet, but we do know who they are. And if they had told us.
Because, I mean, so far, if this change is weekly or daily, it appears that the infection rate for 18 and younger is 2% to 5%, and the communal spread among that population appears to be very low. So if, if our parents recognize and we let them know what online options are available, I think we could mitigate that risk for that, those particular students. I just want to make sure that we're identifying them and maybe having those conversations with the parents.
And I think that's something we need to, we need to look toward in the coming days, especially the ones that we know are like that. Honestly, my, my greater concern is our staff. Because the, the numbers tell us that the younger you are, the easier it is to buy it off. But our staff is the, is the one that I'm more concerned about, especially the ones that are being compromised, our staff.
Your question would be...
Madam President, I move that the COVID-19 guidelines submitted by the superintendent at this meeting will be implemented and that the superintendent be hereby authorized to make such modifications as may be necessary from time to time, provided that any material modification shall be reviewed by the Board of Education at its next meeting.
Second. You've heard the motion. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Schroder.
Yes.
Saleet.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
790 East.
Motion carries. Propose executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA request, resignation, separation from employment, and transfer of position request, all is set out on the personnel reports and teacher negotiations for 2020, 21, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state and/or federal law pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statute, Section 307B, 1, 2, and 7.
Madam President, I make a motion to go into executive session?
Sir.
Motion's been made and seconded to go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Schroder.
Yes.
Saleet.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
790 East.
Motion carries. Acknowledge the board is returning to open session. All items in Agenda Item 11 were discussed in the executive session, and no votes were taken. This shall constitute the executive session minutes. Agenda item number 12, vote on action is set out on the personnel reports, page 387, 388.
Madam President, I move that we approve the personnel reports.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the personnel reports. Roll call, please.
Schroder.
Yes.
Saleet.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
790 East.
Motion carries. 13, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have enough.
14, discussion of possible action on new business not known about or not, could not have been foreseen, reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have enough.
Motion is ordered to adjourn.
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Schroder.
Yes.
Saleet.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plack.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
790 East.
Thank you very much.